Half a day, the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today's Monday, October 11th, 2021. The time now is 10 o'clock. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience for coming to Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Public notice, notice for this public hearing will be sent in via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, October 4th, and then Thursday, October 7th. We have two bills that we'll be addressing this morning, beginning at 10:00. We'll begin with Bill Number 173-36 LS, introduced by Senator Moreland, co-sponsored by myself, Senator Salsi, and I amend Section 11115 of Chapter 11, Section 9112 of Chapter 9, and Section 1117 of Chapter 1, Section 14105 of Chapter 14, and Section 1303 of Chapter 13, all from Title III Guam Code Anted, and to add, Section 15110 to Chapter 15, and Section 1124 to Chapter 1, both of Title III Guam Code Anted, relative to addressing and modernizing election-related issues inclusive of write-in votes, counting provisional ballots, electioneering at polling places, the cases of primary election in certain circumstances and vacancies. And our second bill that would follow immediately after Bill 173 is Bill 174-36 LS, introduced again by Senator Moreland and co-sponsored by myself, Senator Salsi, and I amend Section 15201 and Section 15206 of Chapter 15, and Section 3104 and Section 3105 of Chapter 3, and Section 6108 of Chapter 6, all from Title III Guam Code Anted, to add, Section 3102.1G to Chapter 3 of Title III Guam Code Anted, and to add, Section 3101.3H to Chapter 3 Title 16 Guam Code Anted, relative to addressing election-related timelines associated with primary election, nomination petition, and voter registration. The rules of conduct for these hearings would be the Zoom, the Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee or noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual test fang. Individuals test fangs shall further be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal interference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual test fang is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in move from the virtual public hearing, the virtual public hearing. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any activity during the hearing. But if you need to take a drink, eat a piece of candy or snack, please feel free to do so. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. I acknowledge that my colleagues that have joined us this at this morning, and we have Madam Speaker Teresa Lai, we have Senator Amanda Shelton, we have Senator Moreland, the author of the bill, Senator Titerly, and we have Senator Brown. Thank you all for joining today. We will now begin with asking the author of the bill, Senator Moreland, to please provide us with your opening statement.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my colleagues for being present today, and especially thank you to the Guam Election Commission for helping us come up with this measure as introduced today. And, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your co-sponsorship as well. Thank you so much. I'll keep my opening remarks just really short. Basically, we're modernizing the issues that were reported from the Guam Election Commission as a concern. Their report, of course, is the Election Comparative Analysis Report, which is found on their website at the Guam Election Commission. So we're just addressing some of these issues that the Election Commission has found needed to modernize our current law with, for the election regarding vote counting provisions and the ballots and polling places and cancellation of the primary elections and certain, under certain circumstances, as well as vacancies. So I'm happy that the Guam Election Commission was able to provide us with a written statement, but that they're here today. And I think just by turning it over to them for their testimony, Mr. Chairman, I think they will well explain the need for this bill. And I thank the Election Commission for working closely with our office and Senator St. Augustine's office in drafting this measure. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Moreland, and we're fortunate today to have Elizabeth Santos, the acting executive director of the Guam Election Commission, while Ms. Panglinan happens to be off and taking care of some business. She'll be back shortly, and Elizabeth Santos is joined with her colleague, our staff, Tom. I think that's, I think he's got a great last name too, you know, so. Ms. Santos, if you can go ahead and begin. Thank you.
Half a day, Mr. Chairman and Senators. We are also joined today with our legal counsel attorney, Vince Camacho. But again, my name is Elizabeth Santos, Acting Executive Director of the Guam Election Commission in the absence of Maria Pangolinan, who sends her apologies for not being able to attend this morning. Sidoz Masie for the opportunity to appear before you on Bill Numbers 173-36 and 174-36. The GEC is mandated by 3 GCA Section 2103D to submit recommendations of the commission as to the, as to amendments or supplementation of laws affecting elections or the office of the commission. The GEC appreciates that the proposed legislation incorporates many of the amendments recommended by the GEC submitted earlier this year. These recommendations are rooted in the GEC's commitment to conduct fair, honest, and open elections most effectively and efficiently possible. Bill Number 173-36, Section 1, Cancellation of the Primary Election for Certain Circumstances. The GEC does not take a position with this proposed section. However, the GEC provides the following. To make Section 1 abundantly clear, the GEC requests an amendment to the language to read, "In any given election year, the Guam Election Commission shall cancel the primary election if equal to or fewer than the maximum number of candidates can advance to the general election for any partisan elected office." GEC requests that the legislation also address the issue of independent candidates. Section 15207 provides that independent candidates may file nomination papers for the primary election. Then in Section 15404, independent candidates must meet certain thresholds to move on to the general election. The issue then becomes for the GEC, do all independent candidates go through to the general election if the GEC does not conduct a primary election for the partisan elected offices? The GEC requests that the proposed legislation address this issue to ensure that all potential candidates have the opportunity to seek elected office regardless of party affiliation. The GEC further recommends that the legislation include cancellation of the primary election for nonpartisan offices. Currently, the Office of Public Accountability and Attorney General statutes require a primary election for the public auditor and attorney general. Requiring a primary election for the two nonpartisan offices increases election costs substantially because of the cost of printing a separate nonpartisan ballot and the amount of time it takes to tabulate the separate ballots. Section 2 amends Section 11115, write-in votes. The GEC supports Section 2 regarding not having to publish the name of write-ins if the total votes of the write-in candidates do not change the vote tabulations for the named candidates. Removing the publication requirement simplifies GEC processes and eliminates unnecessary costs. Currently, GEC spends a significant amount of time sorting, reviewing, and tallying write-in votes to publish names such as Mickey Mouse and Superman. The proposed amendment requires the GEC to report the total number of write-in votes tabulated, but only requires the publication of write-in names if the number of write-in votes affects the outcome of any race. The GEC proposes the language to read, "The GEC shall count a write-in vote only if the write-in voting oval provided is marked and the elector provides a name written alongside the voting oval." The GEC shall report the results of the total write-in votes for each elected office. However, the GEC shall only publish the tabulation results for each of the named write-in candidates for that elected office if any write-in candidate receives enough votes to affect the ranking of any qualified candidate for a specific elected office. Section 3 amends Section 9112, electioneering at polling place prohibited. The GEC supports Section 3. However, the GEC proposes the language to read, "No person shall do any electioneering on election day within 100 feet of any entrance or exit of any polling place." The entrance or exit is defined as the entrance or exit gate if the polling place is fenced. The commission may, on a case-by-case basis, and limited to the current election, make an exception to this section through a commission resolution if the GEC deems there to be a safety issue when conducting the election. The GEC has sole discretion and responsibility to determine and mark the 100 feet or other boundaries under this section. Notices identifying the newly set perimeter also shall be posted at the entrance and exit of the polling places affected. In addition, the GEC or any election official present at the polling place may seek the assistance of any law enforcement officer to promptly assist in the enforcement of this section, including but not limited to removing any person from the polling place. Section 4 amends Section 1117, Definitions District. The GEC supports Section 4 because it clarifies and makes the definition of district consistent with another provision of Guam law, specifically 1 GCA Section 403. Section 5 adds Section 1124, Definitions Name. The GEC supports Section 5 because it explicitly defines the name for which a candidate must identify on with on all GEC nominating papers. However, this does not prohibit using a nickname or any other names a candidate may choose to place on the ballot pursuant to 3 GCA 7115. Section 6 amends Section 14105, Disposition. The GEC supports Section 6 because it simplifies GEC's processes by allowing the GEC to count provisional ballots simultaneously with the absentee ballots. Currently, Section 14105A requires the GEC to count provisional ballots within 10 days after an election. In contrast, Section 10114 requires that the GEC accept off-island absentee ballots until the 10th day after any election. Thus, these two statutes require the GEC to count provisional ballots and absentee ballots on two separate dates. The proposed amendment to Section 14105A would allow the GEC to simultaneously count provisional ballots and off-island absentee ballots, thus streamlining the ballot tabulating processes. Amendments to Sections 14105C and D further clarify that all provisional voters meet the voter registration requirements of Sections 3102 and 14104J of the election law before the GEC can register provisional voters and use provisional ballot affidavits to remedy incomplete or otherwise deficient voter registration applications. Section 7 amends Section 13103, Election to Fill Vacancy in the Elyas Latour in Guam or the Seat of Washington Delegate. The GEC supports the intent of Section 7 with reservations. The amendment seeks to provide a mechanism to fill a vacancy in the seat of the Washington representative. The Organic Act states, "In case of a permanent vacancy in the office of delegate by reason of death, resignation, or permanent disability, the office of delegate shall remain vacant until a successor shall have been elected and qualified." The amendment requires the GEC to conduct a special election to fill a vacancy in the seat of the Washington representative only if the vacancy occurs prior to eight months before the date of the next general election. The GEC respectfully notes that establishing an eight-month threshold for a special election to fill a vacancy could leave Guam without representation in Congress for a significant amount of time. For example, if a vacancy occurs after March 8, 2022, Guam would be without a Washington representative until the new term in January of 2023. While this may not be an issue concerning other elected offices in Guam, the Washington delegate position is the lone voice for the people of Guam in the U.S. Congress. The GEC is willing to work with the committee to find a better solution. The Organic Act also states that the delegate shall be elected at large by a majority of votes cast for the office of delegate. The amendment states that the highest vote-getter shall be certified by the GEC as elected. The GEC respectfully requests that the amendment be aligned with the majority requirement mandated by the Organic Act. This concludes our testimony for Bill 173-36. Would you like us to move on to 174 or have questions first?
Where have you hold of Ms. Santos on the 174? Just so that everyone would just stick with the 173 first. I'd like to also recognize Senator Mary Comarch Torres joined us. And we'll begin, questions from the, my colleagues, Senator Amanda Shelton, do you have any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll try to go in the order of the testimony and the bill. It was a lot to take in, but I might have more questions towards the end if you'd come back to me, but just a couple of things of. Thank you very much for your testimony. Could you expand a little bit on the typical number of write-in votes that happen during an election?
So, this is Tom St. Augustine. We actually have our Election Comparative Analysis Report from 2020. So, really, the number of write-in votes vary by race. In past elections, we have not, at least in my time at GEC, have not seen a write-in candidate get enough votes to affect the race of named candidates on the ballot. But overall, in terms of all the ballots cast, the number of write-in votes in total are significant when we're sorting and trying to tell, list all the names, reviewing each ballot that has write-in votes. But, for an example, in 2018, there were 80 write-in votes for the Office of Attorney General. There were, let me see if I can give you a 2020. In 2020, in the mayoral race, the total number of write-in votes was 1,415. So with this, the way that the election code is written now, GEC would have to review all those ballots that have the write-in, the write-in oval marked filled in, and then we would have to review the name and publish. After we review the names, we have to tally all the names and report how many votes each name got. And a lot of the times, they're just fake names.
You'd say majority of the time, you're receiving names that don't actually exist. I guess I'm most concerned about, for example, mayoral votes and the write-ins there, how those can make a difference in such a small, a smaller race compared to the legislature's race or a gubernatorial race, and how those names are significant, and of course, to the public wanting to see those names being published. If there is maybe some kind of exception that we need to make for maybe a smaller threshold or when to publish a name. I don't know, that's just an idea, a concern that I can see when, when races are really, really tight.
So, the amended language, we would still publish names if the number of write-in votes does affect that race. So, in races, like you said, for mayoral and vice-mayoral races, we would likely have to publish names if that number is, is going to affect the outcome of that race.
So, is there a mechanism for the public to perhaps request for the names to be published at a later date or for them to see, to see that for themselves if a candidate was curious or supporters were curious?
Well, at this point, if, if their request is to review the ballot itself with names and no, because those ballots have to be sealed. But right now, because the, the law makes us publish names, there, we do publish the names on our website, and if this amendment is passed, we would have to create a mechanism for people to ask to review the number of write-in votes.
Okay, is that something that, is that something you think you can do? I mean, obviously, you do it right now. You, you publish all of the names. But to come up with that, that type of mechanism for someone to request the names, it is something that you are capable of, I'm sure.
Yes, definitely.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Okay, and so I wanted to go to the last section that you were talking about, filling the seat of a Washington representative and the concern you have about the eight months prior and leaving that seat vacant if, if anything were to happen after eight months. So I know that you support this with reservation. Is there a recommendation that the Election Commission would give to, to us to make this a better amendment to the law?
At, at this point, we're just noting that the eight months is long. I, I guess we would say shorten it, but of course, that is up to the committee.
Okay, and can you take us through your timeline of running a special election? How many days do you need to get your, to notify the public, to plan, to prepare, and to execute?
So, for the special election, after the vacancy has been declared, we have to hold the special elections 60 days after that vacancy is declared. Within those 60 days, there are timelines for candidates to file. I think in the section, in the bill, the candidate, it would be due no later than 40 days prior to the special election date. And then with regard to other filings such as campaign finance, that with regard to the delegate, those deadlines are specific from the Federal Election Commission. I am not as familiar with those deadlines as I am with local deadlines for campaign finance, but there would be filing deadlines for the delegate in a special election as well. Other than that, registration would close 10 days prior to the special election so that we can finalize the voter registration rolls, print signature rosters, and have them ready for the special election date. Training for precinct officials will happen within those 60 days prior to the election, and also our coordination with other government agencies such as GPD and DPW for, and DOE for the use of polling sites and the buses that are used to transport precinct officials and ballots to and from polling sites into the UOG. So, basically, in a special election, our timeline is within 60 days from vacancy to the special election date, and all of those things have to be coordinated within that 60-day period.
Okay, so we could certainly shorten that eight, eight-month period if the vacancy were to occur within a shorter time than eight months. It would just be pretty tight. You, you folks are used to it. You can move fast within your 60-day window. It, it is possible. Okay, so that's something that we'll have to discuss more. And if I could just go back to the provisional and absentee ballots, this change that's being proposed here. For the provisional ballots and the absentee ballots, can you give us any data about how significant these are to changing the preliminary results that we see that come in on election night if we were to wait to count these provisional ballots and with the absentee ballots later?
So, with the provisional ballots, even without the changes proposed in this section, we do have to wait a certain number of days to process the provisional ballot. The provisional ballot law allows seven days for voters to come in and remedy, let's say they forgot to sign the affidavit envelope, or they didn't present an ID at the polling site on election day, which is why they voted provisional. So, there already is a certain number of days that it takes for us to process provisional ballots, so it wouldn't be, like, we wouldn't have results for provisional voters on election night. Really, this, this change would allow us to not count within two days. So, let's say provisional ballots, they are cured within the seven days and they are qualified, and so we have to count them within 10 days of the election. So, for example, in the last runoff election, we counted provisional ballots for the general election on election night of the runoff. And then we had to open the ballots again 10 days after so that we can count the absentee ballots that were received from off-island. And so these sections really is just to allow us to not have to open the ballot envelopes on so many different occasions. We would just like to streamline it so that they're open at once. With regard to the number of provisional voters in 2020. Yeah, Tom, Tom will address.
Hi, Senator. So, in regards to affecting the race normally, or the absentee, we would traditionally wait for roughly around a little over 150 ballots. In the case of the provisional, to my experience, I've only seen cases of smarter races such as the mayoral races, where the provisional ballot may affect the outcome of the race. But so far, in our history of doing the provisional, it has not affected any of the races.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Liz, for the information today. I appreciate it. And thank you also to Attorney Vince. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. I'm Madam Speaker. Do you have any questions to the Guam election folks?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Santos, for being the acting director today. You and Tom are doing a great job. Thank you. And I like the recommendations that you've made to change the highest vote getter to majority to be consistent with the Organic Act and the other recommendations throughout the bill, so I'm sure the chairman will consider those. If I could just concentrate on Section 1 of the bill, where you talked about canceling the primary. So, the bill currently talks about if fewer than maximum number of partisan candidates who can advance to the general election are running in both political parties. And I was wondering how that was going to be interpreted, interpreted. But your, your suggestion is asking us to depart from this, both political parties, and talk about if equal to or fewer than the maximum number of candidates can advance to the general election for any partisan elected office. So, would, would that mean that this provision allows you to cancel one side? For example, just not? Does another provision of law allow that?
Currently, no.
So, so if there's a fewer than the number in the Democrat Party, for example, you would still run an election, I mean, right now, run an election, yeah. And so, do you think that your language would allow you, your proposed language would allow you to cancel it for one side only?
No.
Okay, so it's either all or none. We have a primary, you're, this only, this, this bill only affects whether we have a primary at all. Not cancel the primary on one side or the other?
It wouldn't, it would be by office. So if we take the legislature, for example, if the Democrats put forth 15 candidates in the primary election and Republicans have 15, then only that race would be canceled. If, let's say, in the gubernatorial race, there is only one Democrat team and one Republican team, then that race would be canceled. So it would really be by race and then also by, by party.
All right, and do you?
All right, and do you, um, does the, do you know if the federal race, the Washington representative, has any restrictions regarding what we do in a primary?
No, the Organic Act does not mandate a primary election. Um, where it does get, where the delegate race would be affected is, um, if there are more than one candidate in each party in the general election, um, it's likely that we would have to have a runoff. But there's nothing in the Organic Act that states that the delegate race has to be in a primary election.
Alright. And, uh, I appreciate your suggestion regarding the eight months. I'm gonna think about that. Uh, I agree. It's a very long period to be without a representative. It's a long period to be without any of our elected officials. I think, uh, we just have to balance, right? Getting them in there for one month only, is it worth it, the cost of an election, right? And if you could just remind us, what is the cost of a special election?
Hi Senator, so, uh, I guess in the case of the, uh, the delegate to run an island one election would cost around three hundred some thousand. I guess you could think of it because there are some fixed costs, fixed election costs such as, uh, despite how many, uh, races are on the ballot, we would still have to pay for precinct officials. That will, that will roughly range around a hundred and seventeen thousand. Uh, we would still have to do the same amount of ballot production, uh, uh, also solicit busing services and, uh, 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 the using of the DOE facilities. So, uh, it really depends on which race. And, uh, if it is an island-wide, we still have, uh, a lot of election costs to cover. If it's a single race like a mayoral, then of course the cost would be quite substantial.
Alright, and then, um, finally, the, um, was the other one? Oh, the, the printing, the write-ins. So I'm trying to balance, right? I think, uh, if there is a legitimate write-in candidate, they would like to see how many votes they received. So I hate to not publish those results. I, I understand, you know, we're, we're publishing silly results as well, but, but to not publish someone who actually ran a write-in, you know, candidacy, I, I would, I would like to publish those for them, so I'm going to consider that, I guess. That, and you're saying that the harm in, in the current statute is that it's just taking, it's, it's costly, you said, and it's, um, unnecessary cost, and you want to simplify the process. The cost is really, uh, you have to look at those names anyways, and you have to tally them, right? They have to be tallied, isn't that right?
Yes.
So in the end, you're tallying them, and it's just a matter of publicizing them or not? And you said you really don't publish them in the newspaper, you publish them on your website?
Hmm, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm kind of inclined that that's the only one I might, you know, disagree. That if you're only incurring the cost of publishing it on your website, that I would go forward with it. For especially those cases where we have some real legitimate writing candidates, and I think we had that in this last election. But anyway, or in some of the mayoral races, I would like them to see their results. But, alright, and thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thanks again to Guam Election Commission.
Thank you, Speaker.
That, thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, Senator Tello, do you have any questions for the panel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, uh, Speaker had all the questions I had with regards, uh, to my list. But, um, there was one thing that was mentioned. First, I'd like to thank you guys down at Guam Election Commission for all the hard work that you're doing. Um, and appreciate, uh, you being here to provide us, uh, your testimony, which, you know, it would take some time to read since we just got it while you were speaking, so we can go over it thoroughly, and I'm sure you'll answer any questions we have if we give you a call. However, there was one, uh, question that was brought up with Speaker. In the event that there's fifteen on each side in the primary for the senatorial side, um, then there would be no, uh, election or primary election for senators, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, but what if the Democrats have sixteen running on the Democrat side? And the, the Republicans have fifteen, um, do we still have a primary?
Yes, a primary election would be held for both parties.
For both parties, so it's only in the event, and I just wanted to clarify it, only in the event. And, and do you think the language in, in the legislation is clear about fifteen? And not anything above, because?
Yeah, that's why we added the equal to or fewer than, yeah. So if it, in the case of the legislature, it would be fifteen or less.
Yeah, so that's important to put on. Okay, other than that, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Senator Brown, do you have any questions now?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to get further clarification with regards to what's required for the congressional, uh, filling a congressional vacancy. What, what is required federally? If a vacancy happens seven months before the next election or three months before the next election? What is their requirement? Because I assume that's what we have to be consistent with. If I can.
Really, the only thing, the only guidance is the Organic Act that says that the seat remains vacant until another election. There is no timeframe, uh, established by the Organic Act. So that's, that's why we support creating the mechanism, um, to fill a vacancy. Just so that, uh, in the event that there is one, you know, we will know how to proceed. But with regard to federal law, there really is no timeframe.
Does the Organic Act allow us to amend, uh, to put language in for a vacancy for a congressional candidate?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and, and one just hasn't been put in place. I hope, uh, I hope the question's not being raised because we're anticipating a vacancy in, in a congressional, uh, seat. Okay, so we are allowed then to set a timeline, and this is just making it consistent with what we have for the other elected positions of eight months. Everyone knows the magic month of March of the, like, year of the elec-, uh, year of the election for a time for vacancy. Um, I also, uh, the concern raised by Speaker Terlaki, I, I also concur with her that I think we still need to have that published. I mean, we've, we've known for years, uh, you know, some people want to put something funny in and put Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck as their candidate. Um, I don't know why they make all the effort to go to the, the voting place to do that, but for some, they have interesting sense of humor. Uh, but I agree with the Speaker. I think that information should still be available to the public. Uh, you may have other individuals who are being nominated, and maybe they didn't have an overwhelming number of, uh, of, of votes, but nevertheless are write-in of their name. But I think it's important just for, for awareness and transparency that that information still be made available, even if it's a silly name. Uh, in all fairness, for the voting public and the community to know who, who wrote who. I think that's important to do since that obviously is the main, main priority and mission of, of, uh, the Election Commission. Uh, other than that, I don't have a concern with, with the legislation, but I, but I hope we can at least, uh, address those issues. Uh, going back to the provisional ballots you mentioned, right now, your process is you, you, you count the votes that are on island first? Is that how it goes with your procedure? You prioritize counting on-island votes first, and then after, is that when you guys open the envelopes for off-island votes? Or how does that, how does that all work out in the process?
It's not that we prioritize it, it's just with the timeline set in the election code now. Um, there are specific, you know, there are a specific number of days in which voters, uh, can complete their provisional ballot affidavits. And then also there is a, we are supposed to count it within ten days of the election. And so, uh, that statute of counting within ten days, and then in a separate statute for absentee ballots, we are required to wait until five PM on the tenth day after the election to, uh, accept off-island absentee ballots. And so it's just because those days are so close together, but also can fall, you know, one earlier than the other, provisional earlier than the absentee. Um, we just wanted it so that we are tabulating all of them together, so that the law can allow us to tabulate it all together.
Okay, and then the ten days, I assume is just allowing because these are people mailing in their ballots from off-island, just to give them the additional time with the mailing process to send it into the, to, to, to Guam. Okay, I don't, I otherwise, I don't think I have any, any concerns with regards to, uh, to what's been provided. But I, again, just want clarification, as was asked by one of my colleagues earlier, Senator Tello, with regards to. So if one party has more than fifteen, it still will require a primary for both parties? If there, let's be optimistic, let's say the Republicans had eighteen and the Democrats had twelve. Put it around just for the sake of, uh, hypothetical review here. Would, would you still hold a primary for both, 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 both the party candidates would be listed? Uh, and people could still, in their primary, vote for whoever they wanted to vote for on, on their respective side of the ballot. Okay, I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you so much for your, your participation and testimony on this bill. I appreciate your responses. And certainly, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Torres, do you have any questions for the, for the election commission?
Yes, I was just wondering, um, I appreciate the testimony and I, a lot of, um, what I was thinking about, you had covered in your testimony, so thank you very much for that. But in the election commission, I know that, that one of the concerns is always how to make, um, uh, how to make the, the experience for the voter, um, attractive in terms of it being ea-, the facility, it being easy, accessible for them, uh, to encourage people to come out to vote, register to vote and come out to vote. Is there anything about this legislation that you think might be, um, something that discourages somebody from participating in the election process, or, or do you see no, um, adverse, uh, effects from this, this type of, um, of reform? I'm just wondering randomly in terms of, of when we want to encourage people, is this, does this serve in some way to discourage, uh, in your opinion?
As a whole, no, I don't think that it serves to discourage anyone from coming out. Actually, uh, the section on the electioneering boundaries, I think, would encourage more people to come out, making those boundaries clear and keeping the entrance and exits to the polling sites, uh, clear of campaigners or signs, so that it, they can, voters can safely enter and exit polling sites. I think would actually encourage more people to show up on election day.
Okay, just thought I'd bring that up, because that's, you know, every, it, it's always about facility, right? What do we do to make the experience, um, something that encourages them to come out? Um, but, but otherwise, your, your answers and your comments, I thought were very on point and, um, you know, very professionally thought through. So thanks a lot for that, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Moynihan, do you have any questions for the election commission?
Uh, it's really thorough presentation. I, I would want to thank them for this and their recommendations to strengthen the bill. Uh, my colleagues asked, uh, most of the questions as well, but there's one thing we didn't really touch on. Maybe the election commission can just clarify, under section five, there's a change in the definition under name. Can you, uh, give an example of why this is part of, and some things that you have seen? And, and if there was difficulty explaining that to candidates, and why this would be helpful for the election commission, please.
So in the past, we have had occasions where, um, we receive nominating petitions that have a nickname or some other alias rather than the candidate's legal name. And then it was up to the commission to determine whether or not those nominating petitions, uh, would be counted towards the number of signatures required for office. And so, um, creating this definition or establishing this definition in law would just make it clear to everyone who wants to run, um, for office. And also the law requires the legal name, um, of candidates to be on the ballot. And so it just makes it clear that all the forms regarding candidacy, um, have to have the candidate's legal name, um, printed. And then also, we'd just like to make it clear for everyone, because we know that, uh, the second identifier line on the ballot is important to candidates. We want to make it clear that this section won't change that. Um, it's just to make sure that the candidate's legal name appears on all the documents, um, on all the documents for candidacy, and it also, uh, encourages transparency for the electorate.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. I have no other questions, and I really appreciate, uh, the presentation today. Uh, I agree with their opening statement, especially that saying these, these types of modernization acts, it's fair, it's honest, it's open. And it's making it more efficient and effective as possible. So hopefully that helps us to gain more folks coming out and voting eventually. So thank you, uh, to my colleagues, and thank you to the election commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you, Senator Moynihan. There being that, that there's no other individual, Senator Tello, you have.
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, um, with regards to the publishing of the, um, you know, the names that are going out, um, I know that, is there anything in the, is, in this legislation that, uh, prohibits you from doing it, publishing in the paper versus online? Um, are you most likely going to do online, then, you know, save money and instead of publish it in the paper? But the only reason why is we have a lot of Menomcu who don't have access to online. And many of them are, if you look at your count, many of them are all voters, you know, they're, they, they're probably the mass voters coming in, but they don't have access to online. So is there any way that the, uh, this legislation, or you have any issues of ensuring that this is published, you know, in the paper for them to see than online?
Yeah, nothing, uh, nothing prohibits us from publishing in the newspaper. Actually, the other, other sections in the election code actually require us to publish the qualified candidates, um, in the newspaper. With regard to the write-in votes, we publish on our website as a cost-saving measure, but nothing in the election code will prohibit us from publishing in the newspaper.
Okay, I, I hope that you guys maintain that for now, you know, if he's still not totally gone techie all the way, so. Thank you so much. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to verify.
Thank you, Senator Tello, for making that, uh, clarification, and thank you, election commission, for making that statement. Um, we will continue, um, there's no one else to testify. We'll continue, the, uh, committee will continue to submit, to receive testimony. Please submit the testimony to the mailroom of the Guam election through email, Senator Joe Sonovski at gmail dot com. That being said, again, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and, and providing feedback and suggestions. On Bill one seventy-three, the public hearing is now adjourned. Time now is ten forty-six. We will now continue on, on this hearing now, but we're going to address Bill one seventy-four, continuation of, of the election commission bills. And with that, uh, a reminder, we're, we're still on track. And, um, Senator Moynihan, do you have an opening statement you'd like to provide? And I'd like to recognize the colleagues that have joined us today. We have Senator, Madam Speaker, we have, uh, Terlei, we have Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Tello. Uh, we have the, we have the, um, Senator Torres is still here. We have the Guam election commission folks that are here. And Senator Moynihan, do you have an opening for Bill one seventy-four?
Uh, just really short, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basically, Bill one seventy-four thirty-six as introduced by myself and you as well, Mr. Chairman, is an act to amend subsection one five two two oh one and subsection one five two oh six of chapter fifteen, subsection three one zero four, and subsection three one zero five of chapter three, and subsection six one zero eight of chapter six, all from title three, Guam Code annotated, to add subsection three one zero two point one G to chapter three of title three, Guam Code annotated, and to add subsection three one zero one point three H to chapter three, title sixteen, Guam Code annotated. This is relative to addressing the election-related timelines associated with the primary election of nomination petitions and voter registration. I thank my colleagues, uh, for being here, and also Guam Election Commission as well. Again, Mr. Chair, as, as stated earlier, these are recommendations coming from the Guam Election Commission on their election comparative analysis report, and which is found on the Guam Election Commission website. I'm looking forward to our comments and discussions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan, and, uh, my colleagues. As a reminder, the Guam election commission submitted a letter, testimony for both one seventy-three and one seventy-four. Now it asks, uh, Ms. Santos and, uh, uh, Tom Sonovski or Ms. Santos to go ahead and continue reading her le-, the letter from the election commission. And that will be on their fourth page, uh, reference to one seventy-four dash thirty-six. Thank you. Ms. Santos?
Ms. Santos, Mr. Chair. For Bill number one seven four dash thirty-six, section one amends section fifteen two oh one, the primary election date. The GEC supports the date change for a primary election. Conducting the primary election earlier allows the GEC additional time to prepare general election.
Conducting the primary election earlier allows the GEC additional time to prepare general election ballots and meet other local and federal election deadlines, such as the deadline to transmit absentee value, uh, ballots to YOCAVA voters. Section 2 amends section 1526, the time for filing nominating papers. And section 3 amends section 6108, filing of nominating petitions. The GEC supports the change to the filing deadlines for the nominating papers described in sections 2 and 3. The amendments allow more time for the GEC to process candidate packets, remedy issues relative to candidate filings, ratify candidates, and design, print, and mail out ballots to meet YOCAVA deadlines. Section, the GEC supports the changes described in sections 4, 5, and 6 because the GEC will have ample time to process affidavits of registration to ensure the accuracy and completeness of all voter information. The additional time also allows the GEC to vet and verify voter information and file affidavits of registration before certifying the voter registration rosters, and further enables the GEC ample time to print out the official voter signature rosters for each election precinct. Currently, Guam law provides all eligible voters with different options to register to vote or update their voter registration record. Voters can register online. They can register through motor voter registration when renewing or obtaining a driver's license or Guam ID. They can register with volunteer voter registrars in the community during the district registration period prior to election day, and also in-person registration at our office. Closing registration earlier will allow for more accurate registration rolls, one of the most critical aspects of elections. We're available to address additional questions or provide further information. Do as most.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Senator Amanda, do you have any questions for the, uh, election commission folks?
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you for the testimony today. Again, I'm, I'm wondering if we still have any, anything in the Guam law that allows for same-day registration on the day of elections with provisional ballots? Or is that something that we no longer have?
So the option for provisional voting will stand, um, but in terms of registration via provisional ballots, um, it can only be as a remedy to incomplete registration. So if a voter was just not registered at all, um, their provisional ballot would not necessarily register them for that election. Um, if however, they completed an affidavit of registration and they left maybe an address blank or they didn't sign their part in the oath, the provisional, uh, ballot would then register them. It completes their registration, uh, on election day. There's nothing right now that allows for same-day registration, um, in the election code.
Okay, thank you very much. So aside from accuracy of our voter, voter registration rolls and time for the commission to vet, uh, you would say those are your, your main reasons for wanting to shorten this period, uh, for a voter registration. Uh, can you discuss some of the difficulties that the commission has faced with in the last couple of elections with getting these voter registration rolls out to, uh, the different precincts for election day?
So in previous elections, really, it's that last, um, because right now registration closes 10 days prior to an election. Um, we see a large push of registrants right before that 10-day deadline. And that means in that 10 days, we have to vet, I, I'm, can say hundreds of affidavits of registration. And that is a lot of detail in terms of how a person's name is spelled, their date of birth, their address, all of these things that we use on election day when someone shows up to the polls. Um, that 10-day period to vet all of that information is just, it's short, really, for us. And we want to make sure that voters, when they come to the polls, they have, they don't have any issues. And we have seen in the past, um, whether it was like an input issue on our part or an affidavit of registration wasn't necessarily clear and a date of birth was input incorrectly. And so at the polls, it takes the voter a little longer to get through that check-in, signing the roster process. And so we, allowing us additional time, um, would allow for more accurate registration rolls, um, which would in turn make the voting experience for voters on election day better because they wouldn't run into obstacles when they show up to vote.
Certainly. So I'm wondering now if there's anything that we can do on our end to help you streamline the process of verifying these newly registered voters. I'm afraid if we, uh, shorten the time period to allow people to register to vote before an election, uh, this will be a, some sort of form of voter suppression, uh, that, you know, we're hearing a lot of discourse about in the states. And I don't want this to be a hindrance to those who want to come out and vote by shortening this time so close to an election. I know we've done so much in the past, uh, few years to, uh, give people more access to register to vote, to register online, to register in the mayor's office, all of these different voter registration drives. I think that's been great, but I'm, I'm certainly afraid that if we shorten the time, that we will be, uh, cutting some people off. And so I'd like to know if there's a, uh, another option for us to help the election commission streamline the way that you verify, uh, the new voters so that we can help you and not shorten the time.
At this point, I don't, I cannot say, you know, what you guys can do to help us. A lot of it is, um, making sure, it's administrative, so making sure we have enough staff to do all of those things in that 10-day period. So if it's a matter of requesting more money for additional temporary staff, um, to process all these affidavits in that shortened time, uh, maybe that could be a solution. Um, but at this point, I, I don't have any other suggestion.
Okay, thanks. I'll definitely keep that in mind. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you. Senators, um, Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks again to the Guam Election Commission for your testimony. I share the concerns of, uh, my colleague speaking prior to me and, uh, I, I hate to see the time shortened, uh, for when people can register to vote. Um, I know it, it sounds good, but it's one of those things that people just put off, you know, until, uh, it's almost election time and then they get motivated to do it, and I just hate to cut them off. For the same reason, I also have a take on the other part of the bill, which is cutting off the filing period for candidates. It's my experience that it is difficult for candidates to, um, to run, right? And I, I want to remove every barrier possible for them. I believe we need more candidates in these elections and the more, the better. And so, um, this is another one of those, it's like get, uh, we're cut, it, the bill would cut off their, um, nominate, the time. It would make it, it would require that they file their nominating petitions earlier, maybe. It looks like, uh, about 30 days earlier, right? So, um, end of May versus the end of June right now? Is that kind of right? Is that the time period that they did?
Yes, yes, correct. So if the primary election stays on August 27 and the section about changing the time for nominating petitions, the earliest that someone can file would be Monday, March 21st, 2022, and the latest would be Friday, May 20th, 2022. Um, if the election, uh, the other section is passed of moving the election, uh, to the first Saturday in August, uh, the earliest that someone can file would be February 28th, 2022, and the latest would be May 7th, 2022. Um, if everything stays the same, right now, the earliest that someone can file would be April 19th, 2022, and the deadline would be June 28th, 2022.
If we left this section intact without making any amendments, uh, I mean, if we left the, the law right now intact as to the filing deadline, can we still move up the the other one in section 1, the primary election date?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I understand you want to meet your, um, you know, having to mail the ballots and follow federal law. And I, I assist with that. All right, we're going to think about it, and I appreciate, I appreciate. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker.
All right, move up the date for the primary, just keep the voting registration. Senator Tello, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you to Guam for your testimony too as well. Um, you know, because of the change, you know, a lot of people are set in stone. In fact, they, they plan their, uh, parties and things around, uh, election dates. So with the intention of changing this, how much resources or how much funding are you setting aside to, you know, re-change the mind of Guam on, on these new dates? Uh, how, how, you know, like a campaign to go out there to let the people know these times are going to change now? It's not going to be like it used to be.
So the election code currently has publication deadlines for us, even without a change to the primary election date. There are so many days out of the election, um, or before the election day, we are required to publish, uh, when the election is, where the polling places are, what the registration deadline is, who the candidate, qualified candidates are. So we would still spend the same amount of money in publication, um, if we change the primary election date or if we don't change the primary election date. Because there are other sections in the election code that require us to publish all that information so many times before the election day.
And because we are changing something that's been, you know, norm, uh, you know, standard for so long, maybe there are additional efforts made to start schooling the net. I mean, as soon as this bill is passed, I think there should be efforts by the Guam Election Commission to start, you know, uh, informing the public of the change, not just with your regular standard guidelines that you're requiring to do, which I greatly appreciate you guys are always on top of that. But I think something prior to that, you know, to school everyone. So, um, you know, I, I think that might be something that needs to be looked at at Guam Election Commission. People are set in the ways for many years, so it's, it's a matter of just educating the public and, and do an outreach program, so. Um, if this bill should pass, I hope, I hope you do that. The, the second one I have, when you talked about petitions, when senators put their, uh, petitions or congressional argumentorial, the petitions are done, um, is there a time, let's say, for instance, someone who is not even registered to run, um, can they pick up a petition today and start filling out that petition? Or is there a timeline on those petitions? Like, you can't start getting signatures until X amount of date, you know, and then, of course, I see the dates to submit on, uh, it would be if this law were to change, February 8th, in submitting to, and the deadline is May 7th. But prior to that, how soon can these petitions be retrieved?
So the petition forms are always available via request if anyone wants. And actually, for the next election cycle, we have, uh, gotten a few requests for nominating petitions already. So petitions are available, uh, upon request whenever individuals want them. The law is actually silent in terms of when people can start, uh, collecting signatures. There really is only dates set for when the, the packets can be filed with our office. In terms of the entire candidate packet, we pu- we, um, start distributing that in January of election year. And, um, for anyone who's watching, because I'm sure all of the senators are familiar with the candidate packet, um, the candidate packet includes manuals that will guide the candidate through the process of running for office. And so all of those things are not available until January, but the nominating petition form itself is available whenever anyone requests it from our office.
Okay, that, thank you for clarifying that because I've actually, I had, um, situation where people say you can't start getting your petitions until a certain time because, uh, when they write their name down, they put a date in which they signed the petition. And, uh, so that's good to know. I mean, at least, um, people, that deadline is not so restrictive because like Speaker said, it is hard to get people to run nowadays, you know, um. And we want to do everything that, to assist them, give them enough timeline. So just reviewing, uh, some more of your question, uh, your, um, testimony that you provided. If I have any more questions, I'll, I'll make sure I call you directly, and I thank you all for your hard work. Thank you so much. And to Pacho, you know, I don't see him there, but, uh, I best appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator. Senator Brown, do you have any questions to the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to ask what was the main reason for wanting to change these dates? Why move up the primary election, uh, you know, weeks earlier than traditionally how the timeline has been set? What are we gaining by doing this? And then adding on another 30 days, right? Another 30 days earlier to be able to, um, I guess, get our petitions and declare and things. What, what, what's the main benefit to the public for this change in the timeline?
Uh, to the public, the main benefit is meeting the deadline to transmit absentee ballots. Um, and that deadline is set federally, uh, the YOCAVA, it's the uniform and overseas absentee voting law. And basically, it allows the most time for absentee voters to not only receive their ballot materials, but also send it back to us in time to be counted. And so moving these dates earlier will allow us to remedy any issues that come up when vetting candidate packets to ensure we have an accurate ballot ready to transmit on those deadlines for these absentee voters. Um, because we want to make sure that they have more than enough time, not only to fill out all their ballot, but also to get the services of notary if they need it before, uh, transmitting their ballot back to us so that we can receive it in time to count. Because if we receive absentee ballots after 10 days after an election, those ballots are not counted. So all of these, moving these dates just allows more time for those absentee deadlines.
And, and then for informational purposes, how do you verify someone who's voting off island is eligible to vote on Guam? I mean, I know, you know, in the case of those that are, you know, serving, serving in the military, uh, those that are off island for educational purposes, the law allows for those, but how do you verify that I'm not looking for all my cousins Southern California and San Diego and Vallejo that have been living there forever and, you know, have more local names than me that I'm, you know, hey, can you vote for me and send in your ballot? How, how do you verify that they're eligible to begin with?
Uh, that is self-attestation first and foremost. Um, these individuals will send us an absentee application stating that they are off island for whatever reason that's applicable under the absentee law. A lot of the times, it's like you said, going to school or being off island for medical treatment. Um, and they are signing under oath that they are off island for that reason. Um, with regard to registration, if they are off island and are registering to vote, they are signing an affidavit swearing that they meet the qualifications to be a registered voter of Guam, which is a resident and you're 18 and you're not, um, uh, confined to any kind of, uh, institution or you're not in prison, um, and also that you're not registered to vote in any other US jurisdiction. And so, uh, the crux of it really is the self-attestation of the voter.
And yet, what does the election commission do to even randomly verify that these are legitimate? Because, I mean, you know, I, I'm hoping it's not a big issue for Guam that there's any illegal individuals that are not eligible to vote here, voting here. But, you know, the odds are, there's always a percentage for whatever reason. You know, just want to work around the system. And I can attest to all kinds of things, but if I know that the election commission's never going to verify, uh, why would I bother? You know, you've had people that might, you know, I'm curious, might have been living off island for many years. Uh, you know, like I said, they have more local names than me. Uh, you know, and how do you know I'm not calling them to make sure I get those few extra votes? So has the election commission, does the election commission have any mechanism set up whatsoever to verify any of these, um, you know, these documents that are testing that I'm indeed eligible to vote? Because o- otherwise, I mean, that would be fraud in an election and we want to make sure that that doesn't happen and that, you know, that the elections are, are reflective of really what people that are, are allowed and eligible to vote on Guam, whatever their voice is, that that's what carries and not have influence from others. I mean, you've seen that in the mayoral election. I know that the election commission's making a greater effort to kind of crack down on that so we don't have people that haven't lived in a village. Maybe I grew up in a certain village, uh, you know, my cousin's running for mayor, uh, and I don't live in that. and I don't live in that village anymore. But, you know, I want to vote for my cousin who's running for mayor in that other village I grew up in. And we know that happens and has happened, probably still happens. But what does the Election Commission do in the interim from one election to the other to verify that these are indeed legitimate?
You know, that process really comes on election day when these absentee ballots are processed at the polls. There is a process set in law for challenging these absentee votes. And it would happen in the precinct by, usually, it's the poll watchers that are sent by political parties to observe the process in the precinct. But really, anyone who is registered to vote in a precinct has the right to challenge a voter before they sign their name on the on the signature roster or to challenge in an absentee ballot before the precinct official indicates on the signature roster that the person voted absentee. So that challenge process is really kind of on the electorate to be informed of their right to challenge and also to be willing to challenge at the polling site on election day. In terms of the GEC's processes, we don't have any mechanisms right now to vet these absentee applications as they come in.
No, I wouldn't know who's voting absentee in my village. I mean, I wouldn't as a voter. I wouldn't know. I don't know who's on your absentee list. I don't, you know, do you publish an absentee list of voters for anyone to review?
We don't publish the list, but in the process of, at the polling site, the precinct official announces the name and that they voted absentee. And it's in that moment where anyone in the precinct can then challenge that absentee ballot.
But the odds of anyone in the precinct knowing, how would everybody know? I mean, the village of Dedido or Chigo that are quite large, how would you know? I just think it's something that needs to be looked at for the Election Commission in between elections to have a way of verifying. Because if I have no fear, and I know right now you're not going to, you have not historically and probably, you know, unless we require it, are not doing anything to verify who's voting. We end up having those situations. I mean, in the past, we've heard allegations and campaigns for gubernatorial of individuals that are not even alive anymore, who somehow miraculously may have come and voted during an election. And that, you know, again, we'd like to think these things don't happen and that everybody's being up and honest. But there's a lot involved sometimes in the who wins elections and who doesn't. What's what a campaign can gain from being elected. And they may not themselves, the candidates may not be directly involved, but sometimes their supporters get a little bit, you know, anxious and wanting their candidate and might encourage this. And, you know, we've heard of these things happening. Do they happen? I don't know. If you're not verifying, how do we know? How do we verify that there's sanctity to our elections and that people that are voting are eligible to vote? Because again, I just, you know, human nature, unfortunately, there's those that if they know they can get away with it. Yeah, my cousin asked me, my friend asked me, you know, to vote, why not? So I just think that's something that needs to be looked at. Because the other thing also that's that has been raised that I've asked before is how do you verify citizenship? How do you verify citizenship to know that I'm eligible? Because, of course, we want to facilitate making it easier for the voters to get registered, but you're not verifying. And that's another concern because, again, I think the right to vote, it's an important privilege, but I want to make sure that only those that are really have the right to vote are voting. And we don't have people that are not in that position making decisions again on who who the people of Guam are electing to whatever position they want. So while I understand this, oh, let's get everybody to vote, but is everybody eligible? And especially that we know now that the Election Commission really hasn't done or is doing nothing to verify, unless some citizen out there raises the question. But I'll tell you, most people are not sitting looking at your voter list. I mean, even if I'm going to look at my voter list for order to challenge, it's not something that I would do and probably most people would ever. You know, the most I ever see is when they tell me to sign it, you know, the the X mark and sign my name and when I'm going to vote at the polls. So I just think it's something we need to look at because in in wanting to facilitate and get people to vote, I just want to make sure that people that legitimately have the right to vote are voting because we continue to hear about some of these abuses. And I think there has to be a mechanism put in place, even if it's randomly over a period of time to verify that these individuals indeed are eligible. So we don't have this type of abuse or voter fraud that unfortunately, you know, may have happened in the past and I think will continue to happen if we don't have some protective measure in place to actually protect legitimate voters. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you. And thank you very much for for the Guam Election Commission participating and and providing information and input with regards to inquiries. Most appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Wood, do you have any questions for the the commission? I don't have any. If you want to do a closing, if not, I will go ahead and wrap this one up for this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sure, I can do a quick closing. I just want to make sure none of my colleagues have any further questions. If not, I'll be happy to.
All right, go ahead. Move for the questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, colleagues, and especially thank you to the Guam Election Commission. Just to reiterate, the one seventy-four thirty-six is specifically related to timelines associated with the primary election nomination petition and voter registration. So we're looking at the timelines based on the recommendations coming from the Guam Election Commission, which was all supported in their election comparative analysis report, which we could also further look at in the Guam election site, website. So thank you again to the Guam Election Commission. Now, these recommendations, as you noted in your testimony, are rooted in the Guam Elections Commission's commitment to conduct fair, honest, and open elections most effectively and efficiently as possible. So, Mr. Chair, I'm looking forward to moving both of these bills forward and any amendments we need to do as a committee committee. I look forward to that as well. So thank you once again. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for co-signing these bills as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Wood, and thank you, my colleagues, for your questions. And thank you to the commission, the election commission, Ms. Santos and Mr. Snobson in the background there, who are your attorneys there present. If there, I will, we will continue, the committee will continue to receive testimonies for this bill and for both one seventy-four and one seventy-three. Please submit them to the mailroom of the Guam election through email at senatorjoe snobson@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. The public hearing is now adjourned for Bill one seventy-four dash thirty-six LS. The time now is eleven sixteen. This is Masi, and the committee will continue its hearing at two o'clock for for the other bills. Please all be safe and have a nice day. Thank you.